Okay.
And do you want to just test for Councilmember Lengel that you can unmute her? Just.
Uh, yes, let me see if I can hold on.
Oh, she says she can't see either.
Oh, boy.
We we can see you.
So she might want to log off and log back on.
That might be wise, yeah.
Yeah, because it's telling me that I can ask to unmute, but.
My audio didn't work when I first logged on to the cow and I had to log off and log back on, so something might be happening.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can't hear you. So Dorothy, just you're going to have to log off completely and then come back on. You can't hear us? I you.
It won't let her log off.
She can log. There's you have to be able to log off. You can always reboot the computer.
Yeah, can you hard restart your computer, Dot?
Got to love technology.
I know Zoom is so beautiful sometimes.
Uh, let me see if I can bump her off. Um. I cannot. Oh, wait, I can remove her. I wonder if that puts. Make sure I'm right removing the right person here.
I sent a note suggesting that she log off and log on again in the message section since she couldn't hear us.
Yeah, I don't see her on the roster anywhere right now.
No, she's not.
So we are recording now, Mayor. So when she comes back on, we can just say for the record that we have a quorum.
Yes.
Jody, can I ask you a really quick question? When because I'm recording, so I tried to minimize it to small and it said because I'm recording, I can't do that.
That you can't minimize something to.
Yeah.
What are you trying to minimize?
I just the zoom so I can pull up my presentation for later. So I'll just I'll figure it out, Jody.
Mayor Portem, can you um? Reach out to Councilmember Lengel and let her know she can call in on her phone? Oh, there she is. Right now she unmutes herself. We can test if you can you unmute yourself and test your audio, please?
Yes, I think I'm okay.
Yay, okay.
I closed it down twice. It was weird.
It happens. All right, we do have a quorum. Um, and on additions or corrections of the agenda, please add under new business, the community survey discussion. We'll start that at the top and then also walk on the the Agenda Bill that was emailed to council. Information emailed to council over the weekend, Agenda Bill completed today. Agenda Bill twenty one dash seventeen A revising City of Duval's Family First Coronavirus Response Act policy. And under new, I'm sorry, under consent agenda, please add payroll for January twentieth, twenty twenty one in the amount of two hundred and thirty one thousand, six hundred and ninety three dollars and fifteen cents. Claims for January second, two thousand twenty one in the amount of six hundred and fifty four thousand, eight hundred and three dollars and fifteen cents. And with that, do we have a motion to to approve this evening's agenda?
And Luke, Mike Remington?
Second, McHenry.
Right, we have a motion by Mayor Portem Remington, a second by Councilmember McHenry. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Next up is a motion to suspend council procedures in Section five dot six, requiring review and finalize all items within consent agenda.
Don't move Mike Remington?
Second, McHenry.
I have a motion by Mayor Portem Remington and a second by Councilmember McHenry to suspend the rules in order to vote on items in the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, it's time for comments for the audience. Clerk, did we receive any written comments from anyone this evening?
We did not.
Okay, and is there anyone on the line that would like to submit public comment this evening? And if so, please unmute yourself and provide your name and address and you will have three minutes to speak.
Mayor, did we actually approve the consent agenda or just the?
Oh, you're right. Thank you.
I was like, did I miss?
It's been a long day. This is our eleven of Zoom today, so. Um, to have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda.
So move Mike Remi.
Second, McHenry.
All right, Mayor Portem Remington moved and Councilmember McHenry seconded to approve this evening's consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And now we move on to comments from the audience. Clerk, did you receive any written comments from anyone for this meeting?
I did not, and I have allowed all attendees to speak so they may unmute themselves at any time.
Okay, if there's anyone from the public that would like to provide comment this evening, please unmute yourself, provide your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak. Okay, I'm not seeing any, so we'll go ahead and move on to schedule items. First off is the mayor's report. I'm going to start first off by asking for a moment of silence for the passing of Snoqualmie Tribe former chairman, Chief Andy De Los Angeles, who passed away on January twenty first, two thousand twenty one, and who was a big leader in the valley and within the Native American community and was instrumental in getting the Snoqualmie Tribe recognized as a sovereign nation. So if you'll join me, please. Thank you. And and then under my report, I'm going to start out with something fun. We have a young community member. Jody, if you can promote them, her and her family to panelists, that would be great. We have a young community member who reached out to Councilmembers Naplin, McHenry, and I recently after finding and identifying an invasive species in Lake Rasmussen. And her due diligence was fantastic and and now we've got are working on a plan for getting that weed eradicated from Duval, and she may not quite understand it yet, but her discovery may have saved a significant amount of habitat. So it was no small feat and it was good detective work by little Miss Maggie here. And so I would like to introduce Miss Maggie Carosino. So hi, babe. Tonight, we want to honor you with an award. And so I'm going to just a second, I will share my screen. Unfortunately, we've had some COVID illness in the city, so we would have had this delivered to you this evening, but we can't go on City Hall right now. So I apologize for that, but we would like to give you the Youth Environmental Stewardship Award for discovering the Aggeria densa, an invasive weed at Lake Rasmussen and alerting authorities. Your action will result in swift response to eliminate this not just weed from Duval's waterways and prevent further damage to the Snoqualmie River and beyond. The city appreciates your curiosity and applauds your willingness to bring this to your attention. And in addition, the city council and administration have come together and your family are receiving a couple of gift certificates to a couple of favorite local restaurants to go and enjoy and celebrate your good work. Would you like to say anything?
No, do you want to tell him the app that you use to find the plant, the plant net one? You can you can say it. It's okay. You want to tell him about how you found it? You can say it. You want to tell him what you did? Okay, can you say thank you?
Thank you.
You know, personally, Maggie was in my son's kindergarten class and is just a great kid all around. So to see her make this discovery is really fantastic. So way to go, kid.
I would just say, um, part of why we found it was because we're homeschooling this year because of the pandemic, so we're studying botany and Maggie loves plants. And so when I get real gloomy about the pandemic, I think, well, that was a bright side at least.
Absolutely. There is a lot of bright side to homeschooling for some of us, too. Well, thank you all for joining us. Did Council want to say anything to Maggie? Okay, we'll go with Councilmember Hoag, McHenry, and then Remington.
I'm just so thrilled that you that you accomplished what you have. And I'm so glad that you came to our council meeting so we could see you. I, when I read your story, I was just amazed and I applaud you. Good work.
What do you say? Say thank you.
Thank you.
Maggie, I just wanted to thank you for all your hard work and I don't know if you remember, but you were in preschool with my son, Taylor. So I'm excited to tell him about what you discovered. And I was wondering, just a quick question for you. Are you going to keep looking for invasive species in different places in Duval?
What do you think?
Yeah.
Maybe. Well, thank you again for what you did.
Yeah, do you want to tell them what you do when you find plants? Can we take pictures on the phone? Maggie's not a big talker, but we have an app on the phone and she catalogs the plants she finds and it tells you the ID of the plants, so she probably will find more.
Oh, that's amazing. Mayor Portem Remington?
Thank you, Mayor. Maggie, I just wanted to personally tell you how proud we are of you. What you did made a huge difference in our community here. One of the things that our citizens enjoy most is our environment and keeping it healthy. And what you did was to discover something that even the county didn't know was there. The county is working with our own city now to help get that out of Lake Rasmussen. But this was so important that at another meeting I attend for the Snoqualmie Valley Watershed Forum where they take care of our watershed, they're promoting salmon recovery and health. They brought up what you did and shared your name. They were so proud of seeing a younger person in our community make that kind of effort. So I just wanted to say thank you for for doing that. I can't wait to see everything that you do in the future. And by the way, I will say when I was younger, I was real shy and I didn't talk to a big group of people. And now look at me, I'm old and they can't keep me quiet. Thank you, Maggie.
And I know our our Community Development Director Laura Thomas had something to share as well.
I wanted to very much say thank you. I run the Community Development Department and I work a lot with Mr. Steven Asheski, who's our Public Works Director. And because of you, together we have applied for a grant. And when we, when it gets awarded to us, which I know it will, it'll be for environmental education, eradication, and for monitoring for a couple of years, because if that would have gone into our waterways and entered into the Snoqualmie River, it would have reduced the oxygen, which would impact our fish. So on behalf of city staff, we also wanted to say thank you.
I make you happy. Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Schaefer.
Maggie, I just wanted to applaud your curiosity and essentially you're a young scientist and that's something to be very, very proud of. Keep up that curiosity going forward. Keep up the great work. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Maggie, and thank you, Reagan, for for allowing Maggie to come online tonight so that we could honor her and her good work. Much appreciated.
For inviting her, Amy, that was such a fun opportunity and I'm sure she'll be talking about it to us later. So thank you so much for having her and we're hoping maybe after the pandemic the county can get out there and the guy who we were talking to said he'd love to do like a little workshop for the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts out there and teach them too, so that.
That'd be fantastic.
Would you like that? Yeah, okay, you say thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good evening. All right, so moving on to mayor's report, first off, I'll start with the legislative update. I think folks are probably well aware that both the House and the Senate have introduced their transportation packages. And one has already received a hearing. Right now, we're monitoring daily committee hearings and really trying to get a list of bills to be concerned about. The bill that I emailed the council about last week, House Bill thirteen twenty nine, sponsored by Representative Wicks, some really good elements of it, but not practical for a city of our size, for example, in a city that only meets once every other week. One of the not good things as far as maintaining efficiencies and operations at the city was a provision to require public hearings on significant legislation, but it's not defined. So that could be anything and which is fine. That's the good part. But then it would require for every amendment to have a public hearing before the amendment was allowed to be voted on. The context and the 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 theory behind it is fantastic for government transparency, but there are a few things, especially cities our size just can't manage. So I had a really good conversation with Representative Wicks about that last week. And hopefully they'll get the necessary changes that will be better for cities our size. Additionally, we have our council retreat last week. We set up an ad hoc legislative committee to meet and discuss tracking bills, and so we'll have that first meeting this Friday. Also related to the legislative side, Association of Washington Cities Board of Directors Legislative Steering Committee, which I serve on, met last Thursday and started our weekly meetings and mostly discussing the transportation bills and the funding sources. Currently in the House provision, it's gas tax and carbon tax. And so we had a lot of discussion about that. The staff at AWC was asking for board direction on how to go, and we all said we need to wait until these bills get flushed out a little more before we start making any providing any support or opposition to specific funding sources. So it was a good, healthy, robust conversation. You know, we all know that the gas tax is kind of a dying dying funding source as vehicles get more efficient, they still do the same damage to the road and the gas tax is what funds it. So we'll see where those proposals go. And in other news, on the twentieth, the Sound Cities Association Board met. I was honored to be reelected Secretary of the Board. So having a bigger role within that organization for the second year in a row is quite an honor. Also attended the Sound Cities Association Networking Dinner featuring Dow Constantine and SCA's new president, Councilmember Ed Prince from the city of Reddington. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention Ed has put out, you may have seen an email from Ed today about Black History Month, and he is actually the first black president of the SCA Board. So that's a big achievement for everyone and he's just such a cool guy and so dedicated to public service. We were thrilled to have him step up and take that leadership role. On the twenty first of January, I participated in the Association of Washington Cities Mayor's Exchange. Lots of talk about just where revenue is at. It's not nearly as bad as, of course, we thought it was going to be at the state, but they still have some gaps to take care of. And of course, focusing on criminal justice reform and transportation and COVID relief are are really big priorities there. Let's see. Um, we also had Sound Cities Association Lunch with the Board. I really highly encourage all of you to attend. This is a new concept this year where, since we're meeting virtually, the SCA is pulling together every month a different board member or two to kind of have a get to know you lunch hour. And of course, with Ed being president, this was, he was the first one to kick it off. And it was a great conversation, lots of elected officials that hadn't participated before. And so you know, as I'm looking forward to the next ones, I can't remember what month they assigned me, but that will be fun. And it's a good way to get to know the board members as well as other people in cities that we might not normally see. Hold on just a second. We also had our Sound Cities Strong Mayors Meeting on the twenty second of January. Lots of discussion about the challenges that our cities are facing and trying to move them forward. There was a lot of discussion about stability. A lot of cities are seeing some struggles with the stress of COVID and everything else coming forward and trying to make sure as a board that we are as mayors that we follow the SCA guiding principles, which I know the council's received in the past. Additionally, it's been a busy couple of weeks, to say the least. Hold on. Okay, oops. I'm having trouble with my word here. Just a second. Oh. All right. It keeps wanting to close my documents, so hold on just a second. Okay, on Monday, last Monday, I had a check in with Kelly Markert from Congresswoman Delbani's office. We had a great conversation about what's coming forth that they know will be coming forth in the the US Congress this coming year. Of course, stimulus package is a big part of it. For folks that aren't aware, our delegation in Washington State have several people in positions, very strong decision making positions, more so than we've ever had before. So there's lots of opportunity to have influence over how funding happens and what have you. There will be, of course, more funding packages and budget reconciliation, et cetera, this year, and we'll see how that goes. On the twenty fifth, Laura, Steve, and I met with Metro and Sound Transit to talk about their upcoming transit planning and stressing the real need for those consistent connections, really getting out here to understand our community needs. And we reiterated yet again, like we have been for years, that they need, they have to work with community transit and get connections, otherwise their service isn't going to work out here. So it was a good meeting. It's a first meeting. There I'll be doing a lot of work out here in the valley in the coming months. We also had a meeting, had a meeting last week with Jake Johnston of the Johnston Group. He works primarily, well, exclusively with municipal clients, doing federal advocacy work, just introduction and see what services he has to provide. And then we had a meeting with the Mayor Portem and Department Directors on Monday. We also had this morning, this Snoqualmie Valley Mayor's Meeting, lots of discussion about, of course, legislation and mostly vaccine response under COVID. I think we're all concerned about the new strains that they're here, that they're super contagious, and that we don't have enough vaccines. The Biden Administration did announce today that starting next week, they're going to be shipping vaccines directly to pharmacies, which should help get them out faster. However, cities like Carnation don't have a pharmacy, so they're left without a vaccination site. And most cities have volunteered to provide vaccination sites if the county can get the vaccines. The challenge is, can the county get the vaccines? That comes down, the hierarchy comes from the federal government to the State Department of Health and the State Department of Health distributes to the counties. The counties distribute to the cities or agencies. So it's a complex process. There was not a plan in place when the administration took over. A lot of missing gaps and information, so they're definitely rapidly trying to play catch up and get ahead of the next variants if possible. We also had our Sound Cities Association Board Retreat today. It was a mini retreat and we were really looking at kind of horizons and emerging waves and disappearing, you know, things that are disappearing and looking at our own communities and what we see in the region as as issues that are stable or not or emerging and how we would deal with those. So it was a really good exercise as well as a good bonding experience with our new board members. Tomorrow, of course, the, or I'm sorry, Thursday, we'll have the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Steering Committee. Again, that'll be every week, so if anything interesting comes out of that, I'll let you know. This week, I'm also interviewing candidates for the Planning Commission. And then next week, we've got the Association of Washington Cities Board of Directors Meeting, so I'm sure there'll be a lot of discussion about what's going on at the state and federal level there to bring back. Additionally, thank you all to those who participated in the process of reviewing ERP software. I think everyone knows it came down to two companies, OpenGov and Tyler. Or Incode, I think, is what it was called from from the downline from their corporate structure. And staff has made the recommendation that OpenGov is the way to go. And so we'll be working on a contract soon. Our finance director interviewed a couple of other cities as well as requested additional information from both companies. And the feedback that we're getting from those that have been using OpenGov is extraordinary. And it's a level of service that I think we've never seen and will also provide a level of transparency that our city has never had. I mean, it will be significantly greater than what we have now in regards to financials, which is going to be absolutely awesome. And I'm thrilled to see that move forward. And with that, that's all I had for this evening. It's January. It's been a busy month. Well, now it's February. Does anyone have any questions?
Mayor, you were also going to be reviewing the SCA PIC.
Yes, yes, that's next. Councilmember Naplin?
I just wanted to say a really quick thank you to Director Mason for allowing myself and I don't want to speak for Amy McHenry, but that we were allowed to participate in the, I guess, was that RFQ or RPI? I always forget which one to say, but for the ERP software for, you know, it came down to two and and we were allowed to be part of that. And I was just very impressed by the process and the professionalism. Anyway, that's all. And congratulations. That was a lot of work.
It was. I mean, it was really three years in the making to just from the the start of looking at it and saying we need something to this point, so it was great. Councilmember McHenry?
Thank you. To quickly echo Councilmember Naplin, thanks for involving us and especially being a liaison and getting all of our last minute questions answered.
And it's super exciting. So once we get that contract ready, we'll bring it to council. Hopefully, it'll be a quick approval and then we can start the implementation process, which will be lengthy and extensive, but it will be good overall, so I'm I can't wait. The last item that I did need to talk to folks about, and this is just a technicality, I don't expect there'll be any changes, but we neglected to formally select either by consensus or emotion our Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee's representatives for twenty twenty one. Representative, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Hoag is still is the primary and Councilmember Naplin's alternate. So I don't know if council wants any changes to that or if you want to keep it the way it is, but now would be the time to speak up and make that official call. Councilmember Lengel and then McHenry?
I I think we should leave it as it is.
Yeah, I was just going to say if there's no one else that wants to really get at that and two currently that are sitting in those positions as alternate and main member are fine continuing, I'm good with that.
Councilmember Hoag?
I just want to mention if Jennifer wants to be the primary, let me know.
I am perfectly happy being the alternate. So unless you are trying to get out of it, which I I think you're doing a fantastic job. Being the primary.
Okay, it sounds like we have consensus and I'm not seeing a projection, so I'm going to take that as for status quo, and that's great. So thank you guys for volunteering for another year. For Councilmember Schaefer's information, Public Issues Committee is where all the big regional issues come through the Sound Cities Association for discussion. And it's it's, I highly encourage anybody to attend, especially now that it's Zoom. So you'll learn a lot about the regional issues that are impacting your city. And so they they play an important role in getting regional policy advancement done, so.
Yeah, that sounds like it'd be a great educational opportunity if nothing, nothing else. And Councilmember Hoag, I I guess I wasn't fully didn't fully get, were you trying to get, you know, get out? Because I'd be glad to help out in any way. On the other hand, it sounds like you two are doing an excellent job, so I'm not, you know, looking at replacing either of you.
I'm good with doing it another year. I always enjoy it. I'll send you, it's usually the second Wednesday of every month. I'll send you the calendar and the link if you want to attend. You know, anyone's welcome to attend.
And and I have to say from experience, I was I was on the PIC for eight years and it's a fabulous group of people. Councilmember Hoag can testify to the fact that you build really good relationships and really learn a lot about your other cities with the meetings as well, beyond the business portion of it. So it's a it's a great thing to attend, even if you're not on it. Councilmember Naplin? So it's a, it's a great thing to attend, even if you're not on it. Councilmember Napland?
I just want to mention, if Councilmember Schaefer has an interest in being the alternate, I would be happy to give up my spot. It's honestly, it's a little bit tricky. You know, when my husband's traveling and my kids, I, it's further down south. Councilmember Hoag can explain, but it's, it's a big commitment to go in the evening. And so I would be happy to pass it on if you wanted it.
Okay, is the meeting not, not virtual right now?
They are virtual, but typically, it's the, I think, third Wednesday of the month down at Renton City Hall, when they're in person.
I see, I see. Yes, yeah, I'd be glad to do that, Councilmember Napland. And if, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not looking on knocking anybody out, but if it works better for you, I'm happy to help out with this.
Yeah, we've got Jennifer helping on transportation, so any more bandwidth, we can get her for that. That's good. We need the help.
Yeah, and Mayor, I know you said this would be a good educational opportunity, we're having a one-on-one, so I'm very, very happy to be part of it.
Excellent. Unless there are objections, I will forward Councilmember Hoag and Councilmember Schaefer's names to Deanna Dawson, and that will be it. Great, thank you. What I neglected to ask in additions and corrections to the agenda, are there any councilmembers that wanted to speak this night? Tonight, now is the time for council reports. Councilmember McHenry?
Yeah, just really quick, wanted to remind everyone that, especially with COVID, you know, businesses get hit hard, but also these organizations that have their annual fundraisers, and this year, they're being very creative in the way they do those virtually. I'm registered, and I'm attending the Riverview Education Foundation fundraiser on Thursday, and then also later this month is the Heart of the Valley virtual gala, so I really encourage everyone, especially if it's hard to get out, you know, virtually, it's so much easier to attend if you haven't been able to in the past. I also, so I'm on the Joint Recommendations Committee for SCA again this year. And so I think it was last week I attended the King County Consortium Wide Media Meeting. And so one item I just wanted to let you know about, and I can send more information later if you're interested. They have breakouts by subregion, so we had a small discussion in that group of the North and East Subregion. And the staff has recommended that future discussions on housing capital, so arch allocation and non-housing funding will be tied to the timing of the inter-local cooperation agreement, or, yeah, agreement. And so that would be basically every three years, and essentially, that's to help keep it from being dominating the conversation every single year, and it just makes it a little easier for us to get other things done. But one suggestion from some people in the group was that they wanted a workgroup forum to talk about the exception criteria that was approved back in 2013, just for what is allowed to be exempt from that or to use excess funds. So anyways, I can send more detail if you're interested, or you can talk to me offline. I just wanted to let you know that that conversation will be being had, just about exception criteria for that, and that mostly deals with the percentage differences of what's allocated to arch or to other projects. So if you're interested, you can send me an email, and I can follow up with you there. That's all I have.
Great, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Bridniki? Oh.
No, I'm going to wait till committee reports.
Okay, great. Anyone else on council wanting to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to council committee reports. First up, do we have a report from Finance and Administration? Councilmember Napland had just unmuted herself.
Oh, good. I was asking if anyone on the committee wanted to give the report. So if Councilmember Lingle, if you would like to give a report, then I will let you. Go ahead.
Why, thank you. We are very focused on two areas of contracting, in particular, that are part of procurement. Procurement is the heart of finance, because what we spend is the heart of our budget, separate from revenue, of course, but if we don't manage how, what we spend, then we've got a big problem, right? And procurement's the big part of that. So what we are looking at is a series of charts. And I want to make sure we delineate for you the different categories in those charts. The first category is how much authority council decides to grant to administration as far as the amount of contract they are permitted to approve without council action. Currently, the amount of authority we grant to administration is that contracts must not exceed $25,000. If they're $25,000 or more, they must come to council. That is the current standard. So that is one column in our charts. The other column in our chart has to do with the amount or the value of the item to be procured. And there's several different categories. One category has to do with supplies, for example. Another, one is what we should define as personal services. And then there are the actual construction contracts. Within personal services, there's really two categories, actually three. But there's architectural and engineering contracting, which has a separate state law that governs what we can do. Then there is the personal services category, which has to do with consulting-type work, like plans and studies, things like that. And then there's purchase services, that's sort of another little category, which should not be confused with the personal services that are like studies and so forth. And then, you know, so there are several categories of types of procurement that we are looking at. And then the third piece of that, which is really the heart of government procurement, is getting the very best deal for the residents of our city financially. And that has to do with competition. And competition is driven by how big a net you set for who will compete for those procurement opportunities. And here again, state law is very clear that as government, we have an obligation to assure equitable distribution of opportunities. So again, how big the net is to get lots of healthy competition, to get the best deal for our residents here in Duval. So that's, that's sort of the charts that we were trying to narrow down into what kinds of authorities would apply to the different categories. And we've made some progress. Some more research has been done since the last Finance and Administration meeting, and we'll be talking about it tomorrow again at 11 o'clock. Did I miss anything, Councilmember Napland? So really, I mean, when you talk about procurement, it really is about contracting authority is solely vested in council. And it's up to council to decide how much of that authority we share with administration. Some cities don't give any authority to administration, which, you know, seems a little odd, but some cities do it, and some cities are very restrictive of how much authority they grant, and other cities are much more generous. And, you know, some of that has to do with the size of the city, too. So finding the right match in all of this is pretty important for Duval.
Thank you. Councilmember Schaefer?
Will, will we be seeing a readout next, next meeting in two, in two weeks on this? Some sort of readout with more detail or recommendations?
You will not see recommendations in two weeks, is my projection. Our goal is to have this all flushed out and provided to council by the end of the first quarter. And the, one of the great things about the Finance and Administration Committee is you can go onto SharePoint under Council Committees, and you can look at Finance and Administration, and you can see all the work that we've been doing, including the draft procurement policy that we have been working on, as well as policies from other cities. So you can catch up by doing that, and you could also, I mean, I don't know, Jody would have to clarify, you know, we have the Open Meeting Act issue, and I don't think a fourth council member can attend a committee. Yep, so, so that's, but you can read about what we're doing in the SharePoint.
Yeah, and I wasn't looking at attending, but thank you.
I just wanted to throw out there, considering this is such a major policy for council, our delegation of authority and the competition levels that we would like to see in our city, I propose, and maybe we can talk about it at our next Finance Committee and get feedback here now, would council like to have us bring forward kind of where we're at? I, early input for me is always helpful. It's such an important topic, and just to kind of get the temperature and share the work that we've been doing and ask for feedback. I see some yeses.
Council, Ms. Thomas?
Sorry, Laura Thomas, for the record, the only thing I wanted to remind ourselves is that Dana will not be at the next meeting. That was really all I wanted to say. That's one of the reasons why I was, I just want to make sure if we bring something back, then we're prepared. I can, I can certainly help Dana and bring something back if it's ready out of the FAC Committee.
All right, thank you. Do we have a land use committee report?
We do, but I noticed Chief Hurt had his hand up.
Oh, Chief Hurt?
Thank you, Mayor. Just had a quick question, because I haven't attended any of the FAC committees and meetings. So when you're referring to a procurement policy, is that above and beyond what has already been approved and allocated in the budget by council?
I can answer that if you like, or
Yeah, I'm curious, I'm curious.
Procurement policy is, state law defines, you know, the standards that you have to meet, equitable distribution of work, how you handle an architect and engineering procurement specifically. It has its own laws. And the purpose of a procurement policy is for the city to establish its standards which meet or exceed the state requirements. And it will, the current code, I'm not going to make it universal statement here, but the codes that we have been addressing, in, in some instances, they're, well, they are very old codes. That's a simple way to say it. And they aren't necessarily attuned to what is happening now in terms of state law. So what we will be doing is bringing forth a procurement policy, which would be adopted by code. And it will outline exactly the steps people need to take at the staff level to procure goods and services for the city. Does that help?
Yeah, I just don't want to confuse an incoming police chief or lieutenant that, you know, when, when we do our budget appropriations for the annual budget, and it's adopted and approved by council. And for an example, if, if council has authorized us to purchase a $60,000 vehicle this year, I don't want to, I guess I want clarification that we, that's already been authorized. It's not something we knew, we have to come back and bring to council again.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, the purpose of a procurement policy is not to revisit the budget. The purpose of the procurement policy is outline how you go about purchasing that car or those cameras, or whatever it might be. It's not about revisiting the budget. Now, Finance Administration might need to do that for budget amendments or something like that, but it is not part of procurement. We're not, we're not rethinking the wheel.
Thank you. Councilmember McHenry?
I just wanted to kind of answer Councilmember Napland's question earlier, and just my personal view, I sense this, you know, it's a very far-reaching thing, and maybe it would be good to bring it to a cow initially, you know, before we get much further on it in committee, and just get some clarity and kind of outline some parameters from all council before it really takes off in committee. That's just my view.
So, and I would just like to add, too, that there, you know, this started based off of a policy that was actually recommended by the Auditor's Office. So there is extensive policies that are available already. And I think it would be fruitful for the rest of council to see some of those other policies when having the discussion, to see what the baseline is. During that discussion, too, you know, Councilmember Napland's found cities that are upping their thresholds significantly, because they haven't been changed in 15 or 20 years. Their state law on the, on the roster, state legislation going forward to raise thresholds there as well. So what, what you're starting to see is a trend of cities having higher thresholds in order to reduce the staff work and recognize the change in cost of goods and services over time. So that'll be a really good conversation for folks to have. Councilmember Napland? You're on mute?
I, I think what's happening at the state level is they're looking at raising the thresholds for competition requirements and not any threshold related to council approval. The utilization of authority is at the discretion of the council of how much contracting
Absolutely. I'm just saying, what they're doing is they're raising the thresholds that are allowable under state law, not what a city does. Yes, absolutely. Councilmember Lingle?
Oh, I wanted to, you know, I'm actually familiar with those two bills. At House Bill 1259, and then there's a similar bill, Senate Bill 5032. And, and I think what's very, very important for us to understand is that House Bill 1259, what, what they are trying to do with that House bill is expand how the, the size of contracting in various categories under state law. However, the tie to that, which is extraordinarily important for us to understand, is simultaneously, they are increasing the oversight of the Office of Minority and Women's Business Enterprise. And because the expectation around that bill, and I'm, I know this legislator very well, the intent is to expand the size of contracts and the amount of opportunities that women, minority, and business enterprises have available to equally compete. In the case of Senate Bill 5032, there is also a provision similar. In that bill, what they want to see is, there's actually a review board that's going to be looking at a variety of policies, but the idea there is to make bid packages such that they reduce the barriers to disadvantaged businesses. And so we can't, we have to remember, with legislation, there's also often multiple purposes for how the law is being drafted, and we'll, we'll see. But both of those bills are sponsored by legislators from the city of Seattle. We'll see where it goes.
Great. Councilmember Bridniki?
I just wanted to say that I would agree with Councilmember McHenry. This is kind of a topic that definitely we want to discuss at the Cal more thoroughly, before the committee gets too far advanced with what good work they're doing.
Thank you. Moving on, do we have a report from the Public Safety Committee?
So, looks like I got roped into being the chair. Anyways, it's a great committee, and Councilmember Schaefer's on it, and with his contribution, we've had very good, robust discussion, so we discussed the final draft of the ILA. And then it was explained that the committee member selection process will be determined soon and will be brought to the committee for discussion. Committee approved police recommendations to take ILA to the council of the whole for the first touch review, which is happening tonight. And then we also had a lengthy discussion regarding the past several weeks for the lateral slash exceptional entry and entry-level oral boards, which I did participate in. That was very interesting. Discuss civil service certification of hiring lists, and we discuss current vacancies in the police department. And the committee approved police recommendations to take this discussion to council. So that's our report.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Bridniki? Seeing none, it looks like I did excellently over See none? It looks like I did accidentally overgo over land use. So do we have a land use committee report?
I can give a quick report if you want, unless someone else has. Councilmember Lingle and Councilmember Naplins are on this committee with me. We've actually had two meetings since our last council meeting. We had one on January 20th where we discussed housing and job targets, permits and the pipeline. We started working on the community survey. And we've had some discussion about development map update. And we, our last meeting was on the 27th. And we went over the building code update. We discussed Westcott's request to defer commercial development application. And we also discussed the community survey, which we'll be going over tonight. We had a really good conversation about the banner policy and another development map update. Actually, we did not have a development map update on the 20th. I think that we had to move that to the 27th. But anyways. And that is my report.
Thank you. And moving on to Public Works?
I'll go ahead. So I am in Public Works Committee with Mayor Protam Remington and Councilmember Brudniky, and I was nominated to be chair. And I apologize, there is a folder under committees for this. And it is my fault that the notes were not uploaded yet. So they should be soon, if not already, by Director Lenish FC. But I did add a few things to them. So basically, kind of high version of this, high detail as we reviewed the government facilities master plan. And that was just looking at the latest drafts, discussed missing elements. We changed, added some wording to reflect council feedback. There, you know, we talked about considering a 30-year, maybe even up to a 50-year planning period. Since sometimes, as you know, things take quite a long time to accomplish. So the committee was also informed of the process for water tank cleaning and repair work, which is going out to quote, there was a presentation by Mr. Tozer on the Water Comprehensive Plan Update, discussion on rates, forecast chapters and elements within the planning document. The staff updated us on hiring and reallocating the Public Works M1 position to a Parks position. And in general, there was support from all committee members, but it will need council action, as you probably all know by now. And then also staff shared the discovery of the invasive aquatic species in Lake Grassmussen by a local youth that we met earlier tonight and shared the next steps. And I believe that email was also sent out to council.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protam Remington?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone that on Friday at our work session, that Councilmember Brudniky offered her position on the Public Works to Councilmember Schaefer. So we did make that change, just so everyone's aware of it.
Right, thank you. Do we have any ad hoc committee reports? Councilmember Hoag?
Um, did you want to give a report, Councilmember McHenry, on the human services grants that we'll be working on?
Sure. I, I mean, we're in the beginning stages. We're just gonna, at this point, we're reviewing everything. Jody sent us, or uploaded to OneDrive, and I think we're going to go from there. So we're just in the beginning stages of kind of looking back through everything. And also probably we'll be looping in some staff members as well who dealt with the processing of the grants to make sure we get that perspective as well.
Thank you. All right, moving on to administration update, Director Thomas?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll bring up a slideshow really quick. This evening, we have, well, hopefully it's not too long of an update. And I'm actually going to ask if council wants to put any of it towards the end, since we're still in reports at almost eight o'clock. But I did want to have Dana speak first under admin. And that is to go over the 2020 COVID-19 revenues and expenditures. So Dana, you're up. I can't see you since I'm in presentation mode. So if you go ahead and present those two, and then let me know when you want me to switch the slide.
Are, are you bringing up the slides?
Did it not bring up the slides? Apparently it did not. So give me just a second again. Can you see it now?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So we, we touched on this briefly during my preliminary report, finance report. But the city, there was 352,800 available in, in CARES Act funding from the Washington State Department of Commerce that was passed through. And the city received all of that in 2020. There was 11,000 in CARES Act money passed through from King County, and the city received all of that in 2020. And then the city also received COVID-19 funding from Councilmember Lambert, and that was also received. The only thing that hasn't been received right now is the $98,000 the city requested from FEMA. There, there, the payroll portion of that may not be accepted by FEMA. We have not heard yet. So we're estimating anywhere from $35,000 to $40,000 if that is not accepted. And that revenue will just be carried over to 2021 as a budget adjustment. And then for expenditures, we also just touched on this. This is just, this was in your packet. I did add the payroll expenditure right here, just in one big lump. So that includes overtime, regular hours that were spent on COVID projects. The emergency stick leave that the city could have submitted for reimbursement, but I don't believe that we submitted that much because we had enough in regular expenditures to have our CARES Act granting funding request, and pardon my dog in the back. And is, this number also includes the, the pay that the city did initially. We paid our employees a higher rate for coming in the first few weeks of COVID, when we thought it was going to be a very short period of time and then realized that we were in for the long haul. And we had to just change our processes to make people safe and bring them back to work. That's it. Any questions?
Mayor Protam Remington?
Dana, what's the difference between PPE equipment and PPE supplies?
PPE equipment is things that are basically small tools, what we call small tools and equipment, anything that's more tangible, that's going to last for more than one year. That just simply, I could have probably all lumped it all together, but that simply gives us, it's kind of an indicator that we're going to need to look for it and possibly inventory it every year. Make sure that it's, you know, it's being safeguarded.
So one is disposable and another one's not disposable?
Yes, one's used up in one year and it's pretty small in amounts. Like something that's used up, like a stapler, would not go in your small tools equipment, even though it's going to be around for a long time. So it's, it's usually $50 or more in value that lasts for more than one year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Not seeing any other hands up. Councilmember Schaefer?
Well, thank you. The, obviously the revenue and expenditures don't match. So I get, I'm, I'm wondering how do, how are we handling that, the shortfall?
Well, so most of the revenues, it don't match. So if we take out the payroll, it's going to be very, very close. But so, and then the payroll was already part of budgeted salaries. But, you know, yeah, so it's, it's already part of someone's salary. But we, we were, some of the payroll was, for CARES Act funding, was eligible because, for example, our emergency manager, Sean Tozer, normally he's just a project manager, but his job was entirely repurposed last year, where he did it, took a big chunk of time and just focused on the response for COVID. So that's there, just, it's just in case, we tracked it just in case we get some more assistance and we can, we can apply for it at a later date.
Okay, good. Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great. Any other questions for Ms. Mason? I'm not seeing any, so we'll go ahead and move on.
So again, good evening, Mayor, and thank you, Dana. This is going to be a pretty quick update. We did talk quite a bit about the Westcott request for deferral of a commercial development application. The land use committee will reconsider this item at their next land use committee meeting. We're going back and looking at the, the development agreement. And then we'll likely come back with a recommendation at the following meeting to council. Some other good news, interim city administrator, the job notice will go out Friday. It will be out for three weeks. And so we're really hopeful that in March, we'll be able to come back with some, with some good news. And stay tuned for how we're going to go through the applications and through the committee process. So I wanted to give you that update as well. I did want to ask the mayor and council, I am scheduled, and do you really need to get through this item as well, which is to talk about how we're going to convey our message of our preliminary housing and job targets to them mid-February. But we also have a survey that is somewhat ancillary to this discussion. So Mayor, if you want the other council items to go first, and then we put this to the end, or did you want me to go through these now?
Um, I, I'd like to go through them now so that we don't forget or run out of time at the end.
Okay, so do you want to do the survey first? Or do you want to do the discussion on the conveyance of information to the county? Either, either way works. I'd probably do the growth targets first?
Yeah, no, I would, um, yeah, that works just fine. Because actually that would be, the survey discussion is the next item of business. So if we do targets first, we'll go right into it.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So we did receive an email last week that said essentially to all of the cities within our caucus, and actually all caucuses within King County, that they were ready to receive our growth target number. And really, this is just a soft number. What, you know, what does that beginning target look like so that we can convey that to the county? So they can start to put the targets together amongst all of the cities and then see how we meet the regional growth strategy. And so we discussed a little bit this in our last committee, in our land use committee. But we also discussed it at our planning directors meeting and our previous caucus meeting. And in the packet, you, I actually shared the email that I received from King County. So the options that we see out in front of us are, you know, it's a simple email. A lot of cities are just sending an email because it is a preliminary look. It's a preliminary number. Some are providing letters, others are doing a resolution. And I'm sure that there's some other ways to do it as well. So I would like to hear from council on how you would like us to convey that message. And I will bring that back at the next council meeting for review consideration and conveyance to the county. I will go ahead and share this on the screen as well. It's probably not large enough per se. But this information is also in your packet. So you can see, again, these are the cities that are within our caucus, which is of the smaller cities. And so you can see, here's the housing and job target estimate for the city of Duval, of where the numbers are kind of lying for the, for the regional allocation. And we've gone through a lot of this information at the committee level. But Larissa and I are digging into the, into this new version. And we're going to report back to the committee next week and finalize some, finalize the data.
And I just want to interject here. I don't know if folks are aware of this, but if you go up to view options and you can adjust the ratio of the screen so that Laura doesn't have to shrink out data. And you can actually get it to the size that you need to be able to scroll through it and see it. So if you go to view options and zoom ratio, say you do 150%, you can see the whole thing. And you just have to scroll back and forth and, or maybe shrink your window.
So I, at this point, I'm going to unshare the screen because it's the, what we need to really talk about is how we're going to convey the message to the county. But I did want to share this, and it is in your packet, along with the methodology of how the numbers are derived.
Laura, are you going to discuss the methodology today for these numbers?
No, we've, we've gone through some of that already at the committee and council level. And so tonight is really talking about how we're, how we're going to convey what our preliminary number is for growth targets. But Councilmember Schaefer, if you want, I can set up a meeting with you to go over that information, since you're a new council member, and I would highly recommend taking advantage of that.
I, I'd love to, yeah. Thank, thank you very much, Lauren. And I think I did respond to your email that just, you know, my schedule's probably much more open than yours. So just send me an invite and we'll set that up. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is your opportunity to give me some, some direction so that I can bring back a document at the next meeting.
Councilmember Lingle and then Naplins?
Yeah, I mean, how do I say this? I think, I think what is, what has been revealing in this process is that the, the amount of development, and I know Laura will correct me, the amount of development that was already completed through 2018 was slightly different than what the county knew about, which is nobody's fault. It was just sort of a sequence of events kind of thing. But also that what we have in our pipeline, meaning construction permits issued, lots that are in the process of being finalized, and things that are under some form of preliminary review. When you, when you look at all of that, it appears that we are able to meet our target with our existing development. And I say appears because, you know, the county still kind of does a little bit of moving around in how they're looking at things. But if we can tie that down, then the question is how formal a position council really wants to take. I, I personally would not like an idea of an email. I think that's kind of out of proportion to the importance of this. So for myself, I, I mean, I might even go as far as a resolution. Because, you know, we probably have enough development right now to carry us a good, long way. And, and until we have transportation improvements and other things that the mayor's been working on for a very long time, I mean, I, I just don't know how you would absorb a lot more growth. But I guess more information to come as, in our next land use committee.
Councilmember Naplins?
So thank you for asking us this question. For me, I would prefer to have a resolution that could have some nice wherashes in there that would state, you know, they are growth targets. We, you know, maybe that they're not mandates. We aren't being forced to build to this. This is a 20, 25-year target that we retain our, you know, ability to make choices about whether we want to grow or not. And, and also just an acknowledgement that, how many units we have in the pipeline that we are, in a way, legally obligated to allow to proceed. Now, if you would ask me right now, if I was excited about a growth target of 800 units, I would say, that's crazy. You know, we already have terrible construction, transportation issues. The community is not super excited about it. I would not be in favor. But because we are unfortunately, and in some ways legally obligated, the, you know, most of these units already have, you know, they're vested, they're underway. Anyway, my comfort zone would be to have a resolution, only because, well, not only, you know, previously. I think a lot of these conversations happened behind closed doors. And what we found out later is, you know, there was some advocating for higher growth targets that happened in certain cities. And that was not transparent because communities were saying low down. And behind the scenes, people were advocating for higher growth targets. And that just doesn't make the community feel good, in my opinion. So the more transparency we can have on the communication of these growth targets and where our city stands, the better.
Right, so we've heard two people that want to do a resolution. Is there anyone that does not want to do a resolution?
Mayor, just a comment, Mike Remming? I'm not against a resolution. I actually think a well-written letter has, in some ways, stronger impact. Just our resolution format sometimes leaves some things out. I do think a resolution has a little more impact just because it is a resolution. It's a little higher level. But a really good, well-written letter can say exactly what we want it to say. We certainly want to express our absolute concern about the impacts of that growth, especially on transportation. It is our one leverage that I've seen, our main leverage, to say if we, you know, they want us to take on growth, then we want to see them make some investment in the transportation issues and infrastructure. And, you know, will it go anywhere? Well, maybe not, but it's our leverage. And I think, like you say, a well-written letter, we can really spell that out and be very specific and clear where we want to go. So again, I'm not against a resolution. I just want to make sure that we come together as a city and say what we need to say to be really clear on our concerns. Put that, you know, in writing so that everybody's got it, so we can refer to it in the future. And also help our citizens understand, you know, most of us when we ran for office said that we want managed growth. But managed growth means I'm managing it to get as much as we can, or I'm here to stop it. Well, I don't think, you know, council's in between those two ends. But we need to make this clear, and this is our best chance to do it. I think we have to put all of our heads together and make sure that we have it say exactly what we want. And that's a document we can then refer to from now on and say, here's exactly where we are and where we stand. Thank you.
Councilmember McHenry?
I definitely support a resolution. I just, but after what Mayor Protem Remington said, and I don't know if you were meaning this outright to possibly do both, or if that would be a horrible amount of extra work. But, you know, a letter really does have that storytelling component of why we're coming to this decision. And I think that's really important to tell that story. So I would support doing both if that is not a horrendous amount of extra work for staff.
So I'd like to comment just a little bit. So this is really a preliminary number. That's why some cities are just sending an email. We are going to have to go through a more formalized process over the next couple of months to actually formalize that number. So I think there's an opportunity to do more than just one action. So we could do a resolution now or a letter. I don't, I mean, honestly, I'm not sure I could do both in the next five days because that's when I really have to start to get it together, to get it prepped for the Land Use Committee. But I still have a little bit of time to get it all the way to council. And I do like the approach of actually doing both. I'm just not sure that we're able to do that. We just were notified that we had to get something done. We knew that the deadline was going to fast approach. And we all have agreed and been frustrated that, you know, starting this process at the end of October, not having our buildable lands analysis is definitely not ideal. The last thing I want to do is come to a council without as much information as we'd like and then decide how to deliver our message of, you know, slow and moderated growth and only accept what's essentially in our pipeline. But we're at where we're at. We've had those conversations at council. We've definitely had them at the Land Use Committee. But I do want to say this is a first step, and it's not the last step because we'll actually have to do this at least one more time. And then again, at the ratification process, which is towards the end of the year, this has to go through county processing, then it has to go to PSRC, then it goes back to the county. And then we're asked to ratify it towards the end of the year. So there's opportunity, but I want to make sure that we do put our statement out there at the very beginning of what our intent is.
Councilmember Schaefer and then Councilmember Bridnicky. You're on mute, councilmember.
Okay, originally, I was going to say both a letter and a resolution would be good. But based on what Laura just said and the timeline involved, it sounds like one or the other would be preferable. I'm not familiar with the format of the resolution. But if that's somehow simpler, we can do that at a higher level. It may be more appropriate at this point in time. As Laura stated, we're going to have more opportunities to go through this and restate that. So if that's the case, I would support a resolution at this point.
Great, and Councilmember Bridnicky?
So in the past, we worked with the idea where we would use a letter and that would circulate. And I like the idea of the letter because it can really sort of communicate what the intention of our city is and what our citizens want. But either way, but I just think a letter, to me, communicates to the audience that it's going to circulate to, that messaging might be clearer.
Thank you. We haven't heard from Councilmember Hope?
So my preference actually would be a resolution. And I'm in agreement with Councilmember Napland's comments about that these are targets. They're not requirements. But I also, in thinking about that, I think that, I like the word that they're suggested targets. You know, there needs to be something more in there because the growth targets are used in here quite frequently, and we might think that they're set in stone, you know. So that was just a thought I had. But that's all I have right now about that.
Okay, so we're kind of split. So I'm just going to do across the screen and ask your preference of letter or resolution for the next meeting and see if we can get a consensus. Councilmember Napland?
Resolution.
Councilmember Lengel?
I think a resolution will be easier to write.
Councilmember Remington?
I'll go with resolution as well. I think that Rick really helped me take a look and see, we want to keep this simple for Laura. And we'll have more chance to make our statement.
Okay, Councilmember McHenry?
Resolution.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Resolution also.
Councilmember Bridnicky?
I'm fine with a resolution.
And Councilmember Hope?
Resolution.
Thanks. I just wanted to make sure we got clarity on that. And one thing I will say to this too is just remind the group that the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board, the State Department of Transportation voted against amendments to planning to numbers provided by Snohomish County because of the transportation issue. So I think, I don't think we are going to be lone wolves in tying this to transportation. But we also need to remember that when it doesn't go here, it goes somewhere else. And we have to be cautious because that could actually make our transportation issues worse, depending on where it goes. So, you know, there's always multiple angles to look at. But the bottom line is they have to change the transportation planning before we move forward. So just want to remind folks of that so we can make sure that we include that as we move on. And I think that's a really important thing, more than anything else for us to stress.
So my next step is to bring forward a draft resolution, probably more bullet points and a resolution. And I probably won't be able to get that to you until probably mid to the end of the weekend. But I will for sure get it out by Monday morning at the latest so that we have a couple, you guys have a couple of days to noodle it, and then we have a good focused discussion. And if that's the only thing that's on the agenda so that we can get it done, then that's what we'll do. So thank you very much, council.
Right, and so with that, we'll move on to first item of new business, and that will be the discussion on the community survey.
So good evening again, Mayor and council. And this is, like I said, this is kind of a little bit tandem. The Land Use Committee and I have been walking through a survey for the community that's really based on growth. So I'm going to bring that up. The timing, obviously, we would have loved to have done it earlier. But like I said, you know, we're still a little bit early in the process, and you can only do so many things at once. But the Land Use Committee felt that it was really important to get something out to the community to start gauging what they're, you know, what they're, how they wanted to see the community grow between now and essentially 2044. That's when our, that's the growth target. So let me pull that up really quickly. Hopefully, I'm having the strange, unfortunately, you can see my mouse is not cooperating again today. So give me just a second and I'll reshare. Gosh, I hope it lasts. So can everybody see the draft agenda? Okay, so this is the survey that we worked on at our last Land Use Committee meeting. And we did receive some input. So where I did a little bit of strikeout and highlighted in green, those are some edits that we made or that I made late this afternoon and sent them out even later to the Land Use Committee. So I'm not sure if everybody was able to see it. But there are definitely a handful of questions. We ultimately would like to get this survey out probably in the next week or so. So let's go ahead and go through these. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look at these questions. Unfortunately, I cannot necessarily read them when I'm in presentation mode, but I will do the best I can. So we are titling it City of Duval Growth Management Survey because that's really what it is. And then we provided a description of what we're trying to convey. What are we going to be looking at in this survey? And so one of the comments that we received from a council member was, you know, originally, we had "your voice counts", but the suggestion was to say "your voice matters", and I think that's a really good edit. So if everybody agrees to that, that's the edit that we'll use. Okay, and Mayor, you'll have to tell me if there's any questions because I can only see a handful. Thank you. So the first question that we put in this, and honestly, I'll let the Land Use Committee also take charge of this. They were going to really present it, but I'll help. So do you live in city limits? And that's a yes or no question. And we're going to add an image of the map. So it'll be a zoning map, so that way somebody can look at it in tandem to see, do I live in city limits? Because a lot of times people think they live in the city, but they don't because it's a zip code. Question two is an open-ended question, and that is, what neighborhood do you live in? And then, for example, North Hill, downtown Taylor's Ridge. That way, we can kind of almost put a cloud, you know, kind of a cloud bubble together at the end of this to show where our comments came from or our survey results. The next question is, how long have you lived in the city of Duval? And that's a range question. So you'll, you know, under a year all the way through 25 years. This right here is kind of like our, I'll just call it our work. And we're going to put in some images and links so that the community can see, you know, kind of where we're at right now with development. So not just what's building out currently in the ground, but what that pipeline is and those numbers associated with it. So we put some language in blue to that. And then the red shows that the image or the link that we'd like to place into the survey. One note, I'll stop really quick. One note is we currently do not have the ability to do GIS work because of some computer issues. And so we're hoping to get that resolved, but it might not be this week. So we're trying to get the development map and the pre-application map updated. But because we only have, actually, we don't have any computers right now that can run our GIS. And so I apologize for that. We will work to get that up and running again. So I'm just going to scroll a little bit. So the next quest, so the questions below kind of relate to the information that we're giving or priming that pump, which is illustrations and then words that say, for example, the city has issued 760 permits since 2006 and has an additional 523 units in process. So those types of things. And then kind of talking a little bit about legal entitlement, trying to give them enough information so that they can answer the questions. So the next question is, over the last 10 years, do you feel Duval is growing? And the suggestion was, was like, hey, growing how? What does that mean? So consider over the last 10 years, do you feel housing has developed... ...dot-dot-dot, way too fast, all the way to way too slow. So I thought those were a really good edit. And then number five, the next question, again in green, in which timeframe, if any, should the city grow bigger by adding land from rural King County into city limits for housing development? And then this is done through a process called annexation. And then you have your, the number of years. And then question number six is, in which timeframe, if any, should the city grow bigger by adding land from rural King County into city limits for commercial, retail, office development? And again, this is done through annexation because there's different types of annexation. It can be for residential, or it can be for non-residential, or a combination of both. The next question is, do you believe state routes, Main Street Highway 203, county roads like Novel Tier, Winville, Duval Road, and city streets should be improved prior to more development? So we'll do yes, no, or not sure?
Ms. Thomas, I think you need to add some clarification in there because a lot of people believe that we control those county roads and those state highways. And we have to do our planning really based on concurrency within our city limits. So I think we need to add a little bit of information about that because that's really the issue is those roads. And the state is not required to have concurrency with growth. Otherwise, I mean, otherwise, you're just going to get one answer completely. And I think that, you know, they need to have information for this because this is, that's a very complex policy issue.
I just want to add in that I totally support that, Mayor Okerlander. I think that that's extremely important. And we were trying to give context to some of the other questions, and we just didn't notice that. So I really appreciate it. The other thing on that one is, do you believe state routes? And within that paragraph, we're just giving an example. So it would be such as this road or county roads such as these roads. Not necessarily trying to limit it.
You know, another question that might be able to be a follow-up to that is, do you believe state highways should be required to meet concurrency requirements for growth? Because that'll get a...
Yeah, I don't think anybody's going to know what concurrency is, so we'll have to define that.
We have to explain it, yeah. But I think that if we get some of that information, it can help us with our legislative efforts.
I kind of, what your question is trying to get at without using the word concurrent.
Yeah, we can figure it out.
That they should have to improve the roads before we allow growth, which I think is getting at concurrency without using the word.
Yeah, we can totally do it. Yeah, I can, I use the technical word, but yes, it can be a wordsmith to make it understandable.
That was the point of that question really, was to get that feedback you were asking.
I have to apologize. I don't know if you know, I might not be able to control my computer at some point because I can't even make any changes right now to the document.
Mayor Protem?
Laura, just consider potentially reversing that where the end where it says "prior to more development". You might say, do you believe development should be dependent on the state improving 203 or King County improving, you know, these other roads? It's a tough question because most anyone's going to say, oh, absolutely, yes. But the challenge with it is, if you knew that, okay, that would mean no growth until those are improved. And we know that right now, there is no money in anybody's budget for 10 years. And I mean, it's easy to say, hey, my opinion is... And, I mean, it's, it's easy to say, "Hey, my opinion is, is, you know, yes, stop the growth until they're fixed", but I do think it needs some additional information and clarification.
You don't wanna set false expectations. Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, I, I agree with what Councilmember Remington just, just, I think the way the question is right now, almost everybody's gonna say yes. I mean, I don't think we're gonna get useful information. I think that we need to frame the question more along the lines of what Councilmember Remington said to, to make it clear, more clear, that roads have to improve first, or at least concurrent with, with growth, and that we don't control that, as, as Mayor Okerlander just said. I think we're probably putting a lot on your, on your shoulders. If there is some way that, that one of us could help with the wording, I'd certainly be glad to, to try to help out.
So this is gonna go back to the Land Use Committee, so they, they, this is, this is their, their work, but we knew that we needed to bring it back to the council to get some wordsmithing and some clarity, so all the comments I am recording, but I also need if, if one of the Land Use Committee members can as well, because I can't do anything on my computer right now, other than scroll. So, sorry, you guys. So I'll just start the next question. Oh, now I can't, oh, there we go, oh. So the next question is, "The quality of life in Duval has", and then this one's pretty easy, "Improve greatly", all the way down to "Not sure", and then number 10 is an open-ended question, "How has your quality of life been changed by development over the past five years?" I think we were gonna clarify what we mean by development, is that residential development? Or just, you know, residential or commercial? I think I would probably say residential, because I think that's what we're trying to get at. It's not necessarily the commercial development. Let me just write a note really quick. And then, number 11 is, we're gonna change this to a ranking, a ranking question, which is what we wanted to do, and Councilmember McHenry actually gave us a snapshot on how you can do ranking through the survey tool that we're gonna use. So, "What is your biggest concern about growth?", so this one will be ranked. And then we'll have a closing question, and the Land Use Committee wanted to hear back from you on what you'd like to see as that closing question. It'll be likely an open-ended question, so that we can gather information. I'm gonna try and stop sharing my screen, so that if I lose my computer, that this isn't the last thing that we're gonna see.
I do wanna say something on the, you know, how is, the, the question about how's growth and development impacted you? I think since we can only control within the city, you might wanna frame it as development within the city, because we know that development in Redmond and Snohomish County has impacted us at all as well, but we don't have as direct effect in that, and it might be a later survey question for other issues. So just a friendly suggestion.
We, thank you, Mayor. We'd actually talked about, talked about that, is trying, you know, to talk about, you know, Duval specifically, but also it's something around us that impacts us, right? It's, it's the rest of the valley.
Councilmember McHenry?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, something I forgot to put in here on that last question 10. What is your biggest concern growth, like, similar to what the mayor just said, you might wanna clarify within city limits or something like that, and, but I think, you know, I was torn on this question and how to phrase feedback, because there's a couple features you could use. Number one is, first, you might wanna branch that question, so that might lead to two questions. So initially say, "Are you concerned about growth within city limits in Duval?", and then they would say no, then they would just go to the ending question, or if they said yes, it could take them to the ranking question, where they can rank some of these. I was just trying to figure out how to capture potentially what you don't have on the list that we might not think of right now in this meeting, you know, I mean, not lead people to, "Here are the concerns you should choose from, or how would you rank these?", because I always wanna hear what, or maybe this could be an ending question. I mean, what have we missed, right? Like, what are your concerns about development of any kind in city limits or growth as well? I don't know how to, to phrase that, but yeah, that could be one of those, you know, that ending closing question is, kind of, "What have we missed in the survey? What, what do we wanna capture from people?", because I think that's a really good list on question number 10, and that probably hits most of those concerns, but there's gotta be other things that we're just not thinking of.
Councilmember Lingle?
Yeah, there are two questions on this survey that we actually pulled from the 2017 survey. And the reason why we pulled them is because we wanted to have some ability to compare, you know, where people were then, where they are now. When we, if we go to a ranking, that's not a problem, because we're gonna be able to see what the percentages were from before versus ranking now. So even if you rank it, we still have a comparative group of information. But I just wanted to make, make note of that, why they, why they were, why the basic question was the way it was. And Laura was able to find the old survey results from 2017, and, you know, changes in attitudes or lack of change is really important as we start thinking about policy. And so that's why we did it, that's why two of those questions are the way they are. And I think all these are great suggestions. I also would just add that it's gonna be really, really important that we get this survey out to, through as many venues as we possibly can. We talked about that in committee as well. And, you know, ideas have been everything of, you know, getting, asking the PTA for help, certainly the chamber, the Rotary, any, any groups that we can, get as many participants in as possible, so that we have, you know, a really, really good cross-section of, of interests in the city. I don't know, we, we thought, you know, maybe the school district would help us, but maybe they feel like that's too out of line with their wheelhouse or whatever, but maybe through the PTA, maybe those folks would, either as individuals or as a collective, would help get the survey out, see how many more folks we could get that way.
Thanks. Councilmember McHenry?
A follow-up, because I've been thinking about what Laura asked about the closing question, and I don't know, it's kind of a spin-off of question number 10, but something like, "As Duval inevitably grows, what is the most important", I don't know what word to use there, basically, kind of getting at, you know, what's most important to people as Duval grows? Is it the type of housing that goes in? Is it the rate of development? So, you know, it going slower or faster? Is it park features that come with different development, you know? There's all kind, I think that would be a very open-ended. It'd be interesting to hear what people have to say, because then I believe it would give us some guidance on what we should be looking at to, in our code and in other policies, so.
And as, as far as getting it out there, you know, there's, and here's a thought to consider is, you can simply print a square with a QR code and distribute them to the businesses, because, you know, people are going back into businesses, or ask Red Pepper to put it on their pizza box. Things like that can really make a broader impact as well.
I did see a note from Laura at the bottom of the screen, that the chamber would be willing to help with this.
Absolutely. We, we always work with the chamber on this stuff, so it's, it's their, they're a great partner.
One thing that we wanted to do as well as this is, like, because we are looking at kind of more of a short survey, a little bit based more on growth, so that it can help us with our targets, but what we really wanna do is come back and do a community housing survey, which kind of gets into lot sizes, design guidelines, those zoning issues. So this is just one of probably at least two or three surveys that we're gonna do coming into scoping out our comprehensive plan.
Great, great.
Mayor Pritchett, Remington?
By the way, outstanding survey. When I read it, I just thought, "This is great, let's get it out", so nice job. One of the challenges with asking folks about quality of life is it means something different for everybody. If you ask me in our own neighborhood, and I've been here 13 or 12 years, the addition of new homes, and since we moved in there, it's doubled in size. The empty lots filled in, how'd that affect my quality of life? And I'd say, "It's great, I love my neighbors, kids are out riding their bikes, every time I see them sledding down the hill in the winter, I just smile", it just, it's greatly improved my quality of life. If, and I'm retired, but if I wasn't, I'd say, "Well, my quality of life commuting is terrible", you know, so I, I don't know what the answer is, so sometimes it's nice to ask a citizen right up front, what is it, you know, that adds to your quality of life and what takes away? Now, I think we could probably answer that with transportation, can't find a place to park downtown, you know, overcrowding in schools, wherever it might be, and people of their downtown and neighbors, and so it's, it's a tough question, going back to something that, you know, I think Rick said, you know, are we getting use, useful information and not just reinforcing something we wanna hear? And, and unfortunately, it means you have to get more specific, you know, would it, you know, maybe the follow-up question about specifically in your quality of life, do you want us to maintain, you know, is it that downtown? I like the way Kathy Lambert, you know, uses Duval as a great example. We protected our downtown, we protected it with our codes, so people love our downtown. You know, all the other growth and stuff happens outside of that. Is there, are there specific things that user citizens tell us? What is it that they feel we should do? You know, what is it we're trying to preserve? Because we're not gonna stop growth. I, I don't think any of us think that there's some magic break, and I always go back to Mike Bailey, he said, "The only thing worse than too much growth is no growth at all", so we're trying to find a good balance here, and so it's not just how's the quality of life changed? I love the question, by the way. I just think that if there's a way to reword it, or get a little bit more meat, and actually ask them, you know, "To maintain your quality of life, what is it we need to maintain, or what do we need to avoid, you know, with changes?" I, I don't think there's any perfect question, but if we can narrow that down, have our citizens tell us, so that we, when we're making decisions in the future about growth and what to do with, you know, everything from zoning and transportation, what, what do we focus in on as a city council? And I think our citizens are really smart, they might give us some, something that we hadn't thought about. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schaefer?
Let's see, a couple of things, the question, "What are your concerns with limiting growth?", or concern, could we change that to concerns multiple, allow multiple answers there? I suspect most of, most of the community would have more than one, one concern related to growth. And I, you know, I think it'd be useful to, to hear that. The, the flip side of that, and I don't know if we wanna ask this question or not, but the flip side of that is, is what are your concerns with limited growth? And not asking that, that question. And that might seem like an odd question offhand, but if you think about it a little bit, there's gonna be people out there that feel, "We don't have enough amenities here in town. We don't have a McDonald's", I mean, that's a horrible example, because I'd hate to see a McDonald's here, but, but let's face it, some people would like to see that. And we don't have enough services in general, be it medical or any other kind of services. We don't have enough local jobs, that, that could be a real concern with people. So, you know, their, their commute would be somewhat mitigated if they had a local job instead of commuting into Redmond or Bellevue or someplace like, like that. So there may actually be people that are concerned that we're going too slow, that, that we're actually, you know, limiting, limiting growth too much.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a valid point, and if council agrees, I think you should add a question that gets that, that seeks to get some the other side of the equation. I'm seeing head nods. Councilmember Red Nicky?
I think that question asking, you know, "What are we worried about growth?", because as a business owner, I can tell you, if we did not grow, I could not have a business. I was here when there was 3,000 people, and there could, we could not keep the business open on Main Street. I, don't you remember those days?
I do.
I mean, we are finally at the point where businesses can finally stay open. And for me personally, my business, I have to go outside of the city. I can, this city cannot support my business, it's not enough. And so I don't know what other, you know, business owners think, because, you know, when you're talking about a food service industry, that sort of thing, your population is, is critical to you as a business owner and growing your business. So I think the question of, like, what are we concerned about with no growth would be definitely something to consider.
Great. Do we have any further conversation on the survey? So thanks for bringing it forth. I think we've made a lot of progress and make it even better, so look forward to hearing what the Land Use Committee finalizes. And with that, we will move on to our next item of business. It's a, it's the new walk-on bill that we actually, to preface it, we were planning on bringing this forth at the next meeting, hoping that we'd have some direction from Congress, that didn't happen, and now we're in a situation where, where we needed to bring it forth quickly for consideration. So it's Agenda Bill number 21-17A, and it's simply revising the City of Duval Families First Coronavirus Response Act policy, and I'm gonna let our attorney give the changes, and just, I will also preface that anything we do, if Congress does something, ours goes away, and the number of days doesn't shift. So, Daniel, Mr. Kenny, would you like to explain the changes and what we're trying to do here?
Yes, good, good evening, Council, Daniel, Kenny, for the record. So this was reviewed and processed by my colleague Karen, Karen Sutherland, and so this has had extensive legal review and is being brought forward. Again, essentially, what this does is this puts back into place the, the the structure that was in place last year, it did end, so this is not an extension of that, it is a restart of it, it will become effective starting tomorrow, and it essentially would allow employees that had leftover hours from last year to use those hours until the end of March of this year in certain limited situations, and again, this is something that you've considered in, in concept and structure previously, it is just being brought back into place so that those leftover hours can continue to be used. And so I, I think I'll just leave it there, because I know that you've all considered this once, and I have fairly limited information on it, because I wasn't involved. However, if you have any questions, please let me know, and we can, we can work through those.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Sorry, I just lost my audio, was, as you were speaking there, did you call on me?
Yes, I did.
Okay, let me, let me get my audio turned up here. Daniel, I just wanted to make sure, you said carryover hours. I assume you were talking about vacation hours, is that correct?
Sorry, no, so, so what it provides is emergency sick leave. It was 80 hours last year, and so if there's any hours left over, if the employee becomes ill or must isolate due to coronavirus, that can be used as a result of this. Again, it'd be prospective, so it'd be starting tomorrow. Anything beyond that, and it would be utilizing the extra hour, the unused hours from last year, and it would go until the end of March of this year. And as the mayor noted, if Congress does do something, we had kind of anticipated that they might, we didn't, we weren't sure, and so if they do do something, then that would take precedent over this. But this, it's, it's a resource for, for city employees.
Okay, good.
And the reason why it's, it's here today is because of the exposure that we've had within the city, where we have, in particular, new employees that don't have any leave at all, that may not have the ability to work remotely. Those that quarantine and can work remotely, this doesn't apply to, so, you know, but if they're sick or have a family member, or a family member gets sick with COVID, um, you know, but if they're sick or have a family member or a family member gets sick with COVID, et cetera, they have to take care of them. This provides them, um, that leave so that they're not having to break into their normal bank. This is an abnormal situation and, um, I don't, I think that most of us would agree that if people get sick on the job as a result of the virus, that, um, they shouldn't be punished by taking sick leave for something that's globally out of control.
And, and just one quick point, because it's, it's a nuance, but I, I was talking with Karen about it and I want to make sure it's clear. Is that this is for hours that were unused last year. So a, a new employee wouldn't have those hours in this scenario. Um, because that was not something that was, uh, provided in the structure. So that there's a small nuance there. I think Councilmember Napoli, did you have your hand up?
So I was trying to understand exactly what the law had been and what it provided. And I ended up finding something about, and I think is this defined as FF-CRA type leave? Eighty hours. So what I found online, and I think it was from one of the, gosh, what website? Uh, this was from MRFC. And it said that there was, that cities could choose to voluntarily extend the FF-CRA leave. And it says, the Consolidated Appropriations Act that was signed into law on December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, extended the time in which employees could use FF-CRA leave benefits. The act allows employees who have not exhausted all of their FF-CRA leave to use up any remaining leave. Importantly, the extension does not create a new bucket of leave for employees. It merely allows for use of any remaining FF-CR leave by March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Employers are not required to allow the use of remaining FF-CRA leave after December thirty-first, but they may do so voluntarily. So I believe what's happening is we are saying, yes, we are going to allow our employees have access to their unused benefit that was provided under this FF-CRA. I also think, and I'm not positive, maybe this is something Dana can answer. We have an ability to get reimbursed, I think, for this. Because it was part of something that was granted. I think federally. Is that correct?
Um, I'm so sorry, Councilmember Napoli. Can you repeat your question?
So this is, this, our leave was granted by the government. It's kind of an eighty-hour bank. And so if our employees use this and we're allowing an extension into this year because there was that Consolidated Appropriations Act allowed the extension of this to be used through March thirty-first. That we still get reimbursement for people who choose to use that leave.
Well, so we could have with of the CARES Act funding that we had. But since that's all been used, unless there's another round of, of CARES Act funding, we would not get reimbursed for it.
So this, the Consolidated Appropriations Act, there was, that was only allowing you to use CARES funding. It was not a separate, um, leave that was provided?
No, not to my understanding. So, uh, we could, the, the emergency sick leave could be reimbursed with CARES Act funding, but not. Um, I believe private companies get some sort of a tax break for any ESL, you know, that they provide, but since the city doesn't pay federal taxes, we won't see that.
Okay, it did say somewhere about a tax credit. So that now makes perfect sense. Okay. So allowing this extension will cost the city money. That's what I was trying to understand, like, not that it will, but it could. Like, are we making a decision that's just saying, yeah, you can use money that we're just going to get reimbursed? At this point, we've used up our ability to get reimbursed for this. And so there could be a financial impact.
So I would also say that in the, the last, um, version that Congress passed it, when Congress passed it, it was retroactive. We can't by state law make it retroactive when we reinstate it. Um, so yeah, there, there probably will be a cost, but keep in mind, it's probably unless everybody in the whole city gets sick and can't work. Um, it's probably going to be de minimis and well within our existing budget.
I'm not, I'm not saying I'm for or against it because of, I'm just clarification. If there's, uh, it wasn't clear to me on the information that was provided, if this was going to fall on us or if it just meant they would now have access to something we get reimbursed for anyway, it wasn't clear. So.
And, and so their, their salary wouldn't change. The only thing that would cost the city is, um, their sick leave liability. You know, could accrue more. And then you, currently we pay twenty-five percent of that. So.
Got it.
Mayor Purcell Remington?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have a, a question and then a comment. Part of this is important is perspective. Um, can you tell us how many employees have needed to access that since we first enacted this? Uh, what, what, so what's the impact on us? Is everybody using it? Has no one used it?
It's been small. Dana can probably, can you pull it up, Dana?
Yeah, I think four hundred and something hours. I had those numbers up earlier for our meeting. So I'll pull them up real quickly.
Maybe without talking specifics on any employee because it.
No, 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 I wouldn't mention anyone's names.
And, and thi- this would include employees that have to quarantine.
Yes. Most of our employees at this point have the ability to work remotely. Some do not. Um, so you would look at, for example, the police department. Um, if their officers have to quarantine, they can't work remotely unless they're command staff. So, um, you know, we have some of our public works folks that can't work remotely. Oftentimes, you know, part of our staff discussion yesterday was also that we can often find, you know, work to take home for folks, even if they don't have the remote access. Um, but especially if they get sick, this is, this is something that's very helpful to them.
Okay, so I have the numbers here. Let me just make sure. So three hundred and eighty-eight hours have been used so far.
And you know how many employees have accessed it?
Uh, yes, stand by. I just need to take out the date. Add the name and count the names. Nine, nine employees.
A fairly small amount. Well, thank you. That, that's helpful. Um, my, my own comment is one of the most important things we'll ever do as a city. Uh, and as council members representing is helping take care of our health and safety of our employees and their families. That's kind of a overriding thing for me personally. Um, yes, there can be a cost. Uh, yes, and I really appreciate Jennifer's, uh, reading some of this because it is voluntary. We're not required to do this, but I think it's the right thing to do. Um, and I think that Congress is probably going to be bringing back something that does anyway. So, um, anyway, my, my comment is I, I support it.
Okay. Any other council feedback right now? And again, this was supposed to be on the regular agenda at the next meeting. Um, but we would like to ask for the rule suspension tonight so that we can get it in place for folks by tomorrow. Because we've already had two days of mayor authorized leave and we'd like to get it to where it should be. Councilmember Lingle?
Given what you've just said, um, I'm ready to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second, McHenry. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, do we have a motion on the underlying bill? Councilmember Lingle?
Oh, I guess I need my agenda bill in front of me. I, I only have so many screens, you know, I can't do it all. What is the agenda bill now? I have to go back into my emails.
Actually, you, you know what? I don't, uh, the agenda bill got done late. So let me just pull it up and screen share with you.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
The number is twenty-one dash seventeen, I believe.
Okay, great. Okay, um, I make a motion that Agenda Bill twenty-one dash seventeen. You've got it here as revising.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, I was looking for the word that Daniel used, but that works for me. Revising City of Duval's Families First Coronavirus Response Act policy.
We have a motion by, uh, Councilmember Lingle and a second by Councilmember Napoli. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Thank you guys so much. That's, I, I, you know how we hate bringing things last minute? So I'm glad that we've had some background in this one before, um, to make this one easy. So we'll move on to unfinished business. Agenda Bill twenty-one dash zero eight C, Adopt Ordinance Amending Chapter ten dot zero one. Construction codes of the Duval municipal code priding, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. And this is formally AB twenty dash one twenty-three. So it's carried over into the new year. Uh, we've had a lot of discussion on this. Would you like, uh, Mr. Kaler to refresh or are folks ready to make a motion?
I, I just have a question. I, I, I looked through the, uh, the, the proposal. I, I assume this is, this is an international standard that I, I didn't see anything specifically that Duval was throwing in there that would be odd or extra. Is that, is that assumption correct?
Yes.
Okay, good, good, okay.
Councilmember Lingle?
Uh, make a motion that Agenda Bill twenty dash one twenty-three be adopted, um, by the city.
Second that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lingle and, and a second by Councilmember Shaffer to approve Agenda Bill AB twenty-one dash zero eight C. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, moving on to Agenda Bill twenty-one dash fifteen A. Uh, inter-local agreement for independent force investigation team for King County and for, with Chief Herf and, uh, Lieutenant Dubach and Lieutenant Sabrin. And for Mr. Shaffer, I, I don't think I've explained this to you when we met earlier, uh, the A means this is the first intro. Um, the first read of council of the formal Agenda Bill. Uh, we have a three-touch rule, so it's usually A, B, and C. Um, and council can always choose to suspend rules and vote it on the same evening or move it to a different date. Chief Hurt and lieutenants?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Kerry Hurt, Police Chief. Uh, this is, as the mayor said, this is the time set aside to, uh, introduce Agenda Bill twenty-one dash fifteen A. Uh, in regards to independent force investigations team for the King County, uh, King County area. There, and there has been two, two teams established, actually, is what they're trying to do is separate the county in north and south areas. So when you look at the Agenda Bill or in the ILA, though you, that's the reason you don't see all of the King County, uh, agencies listed on this. They have, they have decided to separate those into north and, and south county areas. Um, we did take this to the Public Safety Committee last week on the twenty-sixth. We had a very robust discussion uh, regarding the ILA. Uh, great conversation, great, great questions. It was the committee's recommendation that we move this to, or proceed with this to city council tonight. Um, for first touch. And, um, I do have Lieutenant Suborn, uh, who, who does have a couple of slides to present to you. Uh, basically in regards to how we got to where we are today and why, why this exists. Um, he was assigned to this, um, for our police department to do the research and get involved with, with those other entities that are trying to move this forward. So I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Suborn to kind of give you an overview of why we are here today. And then if you have any questions, we'll certainly do the best we can to answer those. So Lieutenant Suborn.
Yeah, thanks, Chief. Lieutenant Saber and Duval Police. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, so like Chief said, I, I just wanted to kind of take you through, um, where we've been with this and where we are today. And then kind of finish it up, what the next steps are going to be. And then at the end, we'll, uh, take your questions. So as, as I'm sure you're aware, back in November of two thousand eighteen, Initiative nine forty passed. That was the initiative to, um, add some training for law enforcement in Washington State regarding de-escalation. It also, um, changed, changed the ways that we investigate officer-involved shootings. Um, with that, in December fifth, two thousand nineteen, uh, the independent investigation rules were formally adopted. And then in January fifth of last year, uh, it became an official law through the WAC. And, uh, we were then under, we then required to, uh, make the investigations completely independent of our agency. So where we are today with the process, uh, a lot of two thousand twenty was spent with King County Law Enforcement Agencies beginning work on forming an independent investigations team, which is, uh, what the WAC called for. Uh, like Chief mentioned, the team's divided into two regional teams within King County. There's a South King County team and then a King County North and East Side, which obviously we're a part of. Uh, we have attended meetings and participated in the process just to stay up on things. Um, make sure that, that we know what resources are being provided to the team. How the team's being formed, if there's anything we can provide resource-wise. And just to stay in the loop on what, on what's happening because a lot is changing drastically. Uh, we've begun preparing for the recruitment of two community representatives that are required per the law as well. Which means that, uh, we will be advertising for these community representatives, which will be a part of this investigative team. Um, as non-law enforcement representatives to oversee and be included in the process. And, um, be a part of things like viewing, uh, briefings that would go to the media. Uh, prior to, and also being a part of the briefings that, that the chief of police would get from the investigative team as it was unfolding. So they're quite involved. Uh, there's been draft protocols created to include team structure, command structure, investigative process that is required as well. Uh, obviously, this inter-local agreement has been created and has been agreed to by all member agencies. All city attorneys from each member agency have reviewed and recommended the ILA. And a couple of the next steps we will take, uh, hopefully this ILA will be approved by Duval City Council. Uh, protocols will be finalized and adopted within the King County IFIT, which is the formal name of the Independent Investigative Team. It stands for Independent Force Investigative Team. And we will begin advertising for the community representatives per the requirements. And with that, is there any questions?
Councilmember Shaffer? You're on mute, Councilmember. One of these days, I'm going to get a mug that says you're on mute and I'm just going to hold it up.
I, I suspect, uh, uh, the, uh, financial side of this is, is one of the questions on people's minds. And we did discuss that at the safety, uh, mini-meeting. And, uh, I think the answer to that and, and Chief, Lieutenant, help me out here. Um, I think the answer is minimal. Very, very minimal, uh, impact, uh, to, to us. We do have some, uh, uh, time, officer time devoted to, uh, to training. Though we will be some officer time devoted to participating in, uh, any task force. But, uh, uh, to a large extent, that's discretionary, uh, on our part. And, uh, and we don't expect, uh, you know, we don't expect to be devoting a full-time officer or anything like this to, uh, to this effort. Uh, Chief Lieutenant, would you like to say any more on that?
Yes, thank you, uh, Councilmember Shaffer, uh, Chief Herf. So in, to, to put it into perspective for the rest of council, it, it really operates a lot like the coalitions, we say, we say, we are a, we would be a partnership, partner in this, in this, uh, venture. Um, there, the difference is we do pay a annual fee to the coalition of three hundred dollars. And, and most of you have, have heard several times how beneficial the coalition has been for us. They, they send, they send a task force out when we need the resources. They do, do the investigations for us. And the coalition pays for all those officers to come out of all their overtime and things like that. We pay very minimal, which may be a subway sandwich for those that are out here working, uh, those types of things. And then we reciprocate. This is a similar situation, but we don't have an annual fee. Um, and again, we don't and, and, and won't in the initial phases have a member assigned. The Duval officer assigned to this team, the process to get an officer, uh, assigned to this particular team. It would, would require about two years of extensive training to meet the qualifications to be on the team. We certainly have officers that are interested, but until we can get fully staffed, which is, is, you know, for us is, is probably about, you know, nine to twelve months out, um, we're, we're not going to dedicate the time and resources of that when we, we need those resources on our, on our streets right now. So. So, yeah, again, the, the, the budget impact is, is very nil for us, for sure. It's very similar to coalition's, I hope that answers most of the council's questions on that. And again, our, our city, city attorney, Daniel, if, if you want to chime in, this, this, he's been involved with this. He and I have shared a lot of emails back and forth over several months. If you can imagine, 11 or 12 cities trying to come together and create an ILA that 11, 11 or 12 city attorneys agree on. It's, it's, it's quite a process, and we thought we were there half a dozen different times. And there was a lot of, you know, just small minor changes from, from other cities, all which Daniel and I did agree on. So if, if you wanted to speak a little bit on the process, Daniel, feel free.
Yeah, I'll just be very quick. There was quite an extensive process with a lot of attorneys, the majority of which I work with on a regular basis. And so certainly appreciate and take to heart the revisions that they were proposing. And we went through each round that came out. And there were multiple attorneys in my office that have cities that were reviewing that as well. So I think in the, the broader municipal community, there was a lot of focus on this to make sure that it was right. And, and working with the chief, we, we tracked it all the way to, to what you've got now.
Thank you. Council, have any further questions or feedback on this at this point? Okay, the chief was, wanted me to ask if you would be okay with putting this on the consent agenda for the next meeting? Head nods. Okay, so any knows? Okay, good. We'll do that and we'll be on consent. Thank you very much. And moving on to our last agenda item, Agenda Bill 21-16A, Resolution Waiving Temporary Sign Permit Fees. Ms. Thomas?
Good evening. I had, still have an issue with my mouse, but it seems to be a little bit better. So good evening, Mayor and Council again. So this evening, we're looking at Agenda Bill 21-16A. This is a temporary fee waiver. Our fee waiver from last year expired on 12/31/2020. But because we still have COVID and we still have businesses that are struggling, we wanted to essentially do a redo. So we created a new resolution. And so it looks pretty similar to Ordinance 20-09, which is the one we passed last year. And this is a temporary waiver of fees through the end of 2021. This is a tool to provide economic and social recovery for our businesses and even our nonprofits as well because it's not just for businesses. And again, while this is a really small gesture to our businesses, we think it's a necessary gesture. It's, it's kind of one of those really small things that we can do. So essentially, the temporary sign permit fee authorized by Resolution 0504 and Resolution 1102. So that's where we have the fees that we have for signs. That's what we would be waiving is the sign fees for those temporary signs. And that could be an A board sign or a banner sign. So I will take any questions that council may have.
Councilmember Shaffer? You're on mute.
I'm sorry. No question, just a statement of support for this. Absolutely, we should do this. It's a good, it's a good gesture from our, from the council to our businesses, you know, showing that we do, you know, do care about their predicament.
Thank you. And if council wants to, since this is essentially a repeat of something we've already done, if you'd like to suspend the rules and vote on this this evening, that would be helpful, I think, to City Hall. Councilmember Lingle and then McHenry?
I make a motion that we suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Do we have a motion for Agenda Bill 21-16A?
I move we approve Agenda Bill 21-16A, approving a resolution temporarily waiving temporary signage permit fees in response to COVID-19 pandemic.
And I, I second that.
Great. We have a motion by Councilmember McHenry and a second by Councilmember Shaffer. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. That does bring us to the end of our agenda, but I, I realized there was one thing I failed to share during mayor's report. Council hours this week, I'm taking a family member to get vaccinated. So I will try and take a call, but if not, just we can, send me a time that we can connect if you want to chat. Otherwise, it'll just resume back to normal. I, I think that most of the time I'll, I'll be within range and everything like that. So just want to let you know that this is kind of the time that had to get done. And so sorry, it had to be scheduled during that time, but that's it. And if we don't have any objections, we are adjourned. Great, good night, everybody.
Bye.